All to the joint session of the Hefen Bay City Council and Planning Commission for a LUP Land Use Plan Study Session. I think the power is going to go off in the rest of the city at 10:00. We have a generator, but we'd like to work expeditiously as possible, but I know there's a lot on the agenda. So let's get started with a roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone? Commissioner Polgar?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Commissioner Riddick?
Here.
Councilmember Riddick?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Vice Chair Holt?
Here.
Mayor Rehbeck?
Here.
Chair Benjamin?
Here.
You have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our planning director, Jill Ikas, is going to start us all off.
Welcome and good evening. We'd like to thank everyone who is here tonight. We understand this has been a very busy time, and especially our city council and planning commissioners, this is an extra meeting, so they are working an extra shift here. And we appreciate our public being here as well. Please make yourself comfortable. We tried to have some refreshments for you. This is a big moment for us, and we're very excited to have a joint session of our council and planning commission on this land use plan. Reminding everyone in the room, this is something that we talk about with our planning commission at each meeting. This is a study session, not a decision-making meeting. Throughout this process, we've been careful to pay attention to potential conflicts of interest. Under the Political Reform Act, the city council and planning commission can oversee general plan and local coastal program updates. However, when it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on maps, individual council members or commissioners may need to recuse themselves. Following public comment tonight, when this item comes back to the council and commission for discussion, we request that each of you acknowledge if there are specific sites that you would like to discuss. If that is the case, then we will make sure to structure the order of the discussion items so that we can give council members and commissioners a chance to excuse themselves for those portions of the discussions, should there be a conflict. We've structured the presentation so that there should not be any conflicts with that, and we will be here to provide guidance. Our city attorney is going to chime in if she's concerned about anything. And with that, we can start. Tonight, you'll receive a presentation from staff. The meeting will follow an order that is familiar to you. In order to give council and commission plenty of time for discussion, staff recommends that you hold clarifying questions until the end of the presentation. Let us get through that if you can. And to limit your clarifying questions to those that are especially significant and important for public comment, that way you can preserve the rest of the time for your discussion. The full draft of the land use plan update has been available since July, although most of those chapters were provided much earlier than that. This study session is obviously a pivotal point, and the planning commission has hosted sessions over the past year that brought forth over 500 public comments on the draft, which staff has strived to respond to in alignment with the planning commission's direction. We've been also working directly with coastal commission staff on suggested revisions, and we are now here to provide an overview of proposed strategies and additional opportunities to address some of the major policy topics for the final revised draft for the planning commission. And before we do, just a quick, we want to acknowledge, because there was so much work done, a reminder of the guiding principles that the land use plan update is founded on. These were established by the General Plan Advisory Committee in 2014. We believe that the draft plan maintains alignment with these. We'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the General Plan Advisory Committee for their foundational work on the land use plan update. This committee is being formally disbanded tonight as the land use plan update is progressing towards public hearings. Mayor Rehbeck has signed certificates of appreciation for these members, three of whom are up here on the dais tonight. You have three commissioners who were GPEC members, Chair Holt, Vice Chair Benjamin, and Commissioner Polgar. A lot of staying power. Bridgette has the certificates, and she will make sure that they were delivered. Excuse me.
I want to thank all the members of the GPEC. It's a job that citizens take seriously, and we're greatly appreciative for the hard work that they put in. And now they're going to see the fruits of their labors with this land use plan update. So thank you all very much.
So we'd also like to acknowledge the work of the planning commission, what they've been doing so, so well for so long here this year, especially the planning commission ad hoc subcommittee who supported staff throughout development of this draft land use plan. These chapters have been available over the last year and were discussed over a series of nine planning commission study sessions. Planning commission input has been also gathered through detailed meeting minutes that they've been reviewing, and staff notes throughout this process, which we've been using as a guide in our preparation for revising the document for future public hearings. So that's really a tome of information from those sessions. So taking us back to the community input, of the many comments received, there were several topic areas that are of particular interest to your community, and so we were able to prepare master responses. Those were provided in Attachment 1 to your report. They represent topics that are also of interest to council and the commission and will be the focus of tonight's presentation. Plan developments were the most popular topic of all, and we will begin the content portion of this presentation with the plan developments, followed by housing strategy and town center topics that we would like to highlight for your discussion. And before she begins, it is my pleasure to introduce Brittany Cosellino, our associate planner to council. I know that you have all met her, and she is certainly a regular at the planning commission, but this is her debut with you, and she has been invaluable to this project, and I'm sure that it's not a stretch to presume that council extends a warm welcome to Brittany. And yes. Take it away.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, everyone. All right. So jumping into the PDs, one of the major focuses of this land use plan update is a refreshed look at the plan development areas in town. The existing, oh, no, that's a bad start. I think we just need power, which we have luckily. Okay, so the existing land use plan discusses individual site constraints and establishes maximum development densities for the PDs, but does not quite harmonize these two concepts. For example, the Carter Hill PD is cited as having landslide and erosion hazards challenging ingress and egress and potential for viewshed impacts, but is permitted a maximum of 50 units in a relatively small area below the 160-foot contour line. So the proposed approach for this LUP update is to take a more realistic look about at what these PDs can support. So this would be done through a preliminary site assessment prior to the master planning process that would establish a net buildable acreage. And this net area would not include areas such as sensitive habitat hazards, parcels with extinguished development rights, or other such development constraints. So the overall intent for these PDs is to plan holistically for development while protecting all of these different coastal resources. So using our updated habitat maps, our hazard overlay zones, and parcel ownership data, we arrived at estimated net acreages and estimated buildout, maximum buildouts for each PD. And these were illustrated through the draft PD diagrams and policies that were specific to each individual PD. So this new approach was highlighted in many public comments, as well as the September 23 comment letter from coastal commission staff. The coastal commission letter noted the challenges associated with development permit review in the developed PDs and recommended replacing the PD land use designation across the board to reflect actual or intended land uses. Understanding that this may not be possible for every PD, the coastal commission staff suggested at least redesignating the developed PDs and retaining the PD designation only for those that are substantially undeveloped. We appreciated this input and are having ongoing dialogue with coastal commission staff and believe that we have arrived at a solution that we can move forward with. The majority of the developed PDs do make sense to redesignate to reflect how they have been built out with the, with the exception of Ocean Colony and Pacific Ridge. Staff recognizes that these two PDs have a more complicated history and concurs with the community input received on not pursuing a land use change for these two developed PDs. We also appreciated the coastal commission staff's consideration of challenges for the undeveloped PDs, where a mix of ownership patterns and development constraints would actually benefit from the more flexible master planning process provided by the PD land use designation. The South Downtown Gateway PD is an exception to this, as it contains a single parcel that has been long intended for a commercial land use designation under the existing land use plan. So I'll quickly click through the six PDs that staff is recommending redesignating from north to south. Just let us know at the end of the presentation if you'd like to come back to any of these slides to go over in more detail.
Just, just one moment. We noticed that council's presentations are in advancing, so take a look at the slide. It's the Casamira slide. You can follow along with your hard copy, and it's a map with a yellow boundary on it if your, if your screen isn't moving along with Brittany's discussion. Is it working now? Okay. Good.
Good. Okay, we're on slide 13. All right, so starting with Casamira, this PD has been built out consistent with the residential medium land use designation, and policies in the coastal hazards chapter would apply to address concerns related to bluff top setbacks, shoreline armoring, and coastal trail preservation. Matucci fits into the residential low-density land use. Future zoning updates could consider a large lot residential zoning district to accommodate these larger lot sizes and avoid subdivision potential. The Andriati PD has several applicable land uses. The commercial general land use designation could apply to the stone pine center and post office parcels. The Cypress Town Homes are consistent with residential medium-density land use, and the parcels fronting Highway 92 could fit into a mixed-use or land industrial land use designation. Jill will also come back to this PD in a bit more detail with respect to town center and housing strategies. Main Street Park, fairly straightforward. This falls into our residential medium land use designation. South Downtown Gateway, as I mentioned, this could be considered for a commercial land use designation, although it is an undeveloped PD. We did not want to presuppose the land use here, as there is an active development application for this site, but note that the existing land use plan intended for this PD to be developed as compatible with a general commercial land use designation and does not require preparation of a specific plan, as it does for the other PDs.
Brittany, a clarifying question. Is this called the A.C. Smith PD in other places?
El C Smith Estate, yes. We refer to it as the South Downtown Gateway PD in the land use plan update.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, the South Wave Crest PD, which includes the Gulf Links Ocean Course and Pelican Point RV Park, which fit into the commercial visitor-serving land use designation. So that leaves the following PDs, again listed from north to south. Jill will also be coming back to Podesta as part of the LUP update's town center housing strategies. And we have slides for each of these PDs that we can come back to at the end of the presentation if anyone has more specific questions. I'm just going to pick on Venice Beach as an example of an undeveloped PD and why it should remain as such. So the draft LUP contains these PD diagrams in Chapter 2. And for Venice Beach, we see where challenges would arise with redesignating this area from a PD land use designation. The Venice Boulevard provides a view corridor to the ocean, and individually-owned paper lots are on either side of the road, and the surrounding Frenchman's Creek and State Parks habitat would require 100-foot buffers. The northern side of the PD by the creek contains equestrian uses that could be compatible with a urban reserve or an agriculture land use designation, but the remaining area contains habitat and viewshed protection needs that would be better addressed through the PD master planning process. Also, based on coastal commission staff input and public comments, these PD diagrams will not be brought forward for the final draft. They were intended as a visual planning tool to help the reader understand the new PD policies. We will also be looking at removing the quantitative buildout estimates that were provided by the land use plan update through the estimated net acreage process. So that would leave the more general narrative and a very clear vision of how staff in the city sees these PDs developing. So there are also two new PDs that were proposed with this land use plan update that staff does not recommend bringing forward for the final draft. So the first, we refer to as Upper Grandview and Glen Creek, and it contained the upper portion of the Grandview neighborhood and the upper portion of the city-owned Glen Creek parcel. The idea was to provide this area with the benefits of PD master planning, as there are a number of habitat and drainage constraints, and staff was pursuing options for affordable housing sites on the city property. The city had recent wetland delineations done for the Glen Creek parcel and the Beechwood frontage along Highway 1 for the city's goat grazing fuel management program, and these maps really highlighted the habitat constraints and access constraints presented by the large amount of wetlands. So the mapped wetlands would require 100-foot buffers, which does not leave much room for the lower portion of Glen Creek or much room for access to the site from Highway 1. The upper portion is less encumbered and is recommended to remain in its current residential medium land use designation for further study for housing potential. So staff would also recommend retaining the upper portion of the Grandview neighborhood in its current residential medium land use and moving the lower portion of Glen Creek into the new open space for conservation land use that is introduced in this land use plan update. The second PD idea is Dolores, fronting Highway 1 between Wave Crest Road and Redondo Beach Road. The idea here was to establish a donor-receiver relationship for a transfer of development rights program between North Wave Crest and Dolores, but this did not receive much support from the landowners in these PDs, and we learned more about the drainage challenges in this area. So we have looked at other options for facilitating an appropriate amount of development in this area. One option to consider is a commercial node at the corner of Redondo Beach Road and Highway 1, which would slightly adjust the North Wave Crest PD boundary, but would provide for some neighborhood service uses and potentially an assisted living site. So this could be done through the commercial general land use designation, followed by the commercial residential zoning district, which would accommodate the existing land uses in this area. Another option could be a low-density residential land use, which would support the existing neighborhood pattern and could also use that large lot residential zoning I mentioned for Matucci. Another option would be to leave the residential medium land use designation as currently is. And Jill will take it from here to discuss housing strategies and the town center.
There's still not? Okay. Thank you, Brittany. So as Brittany noted, we've got all of the PD maps hooked onto the back of our presentation if you are interested in discussing any individual PDs. The example of Venice was meant to help people understand how the structure of the draft plan is working, and so just, just let us know after public comment if you're interested in any of those. And I do want to reiterate, because I know there's some property owners in the room who have been concerned about this, we are not proposing to bring the Upper Grandview Glen Creek PD forward. We are not proposing to do that, and that's consistent with discussions that we've had with them based on what Brittany told you. Okay. Needing to talk about housing affordability strategies a bit, much of this material in the next two sections, housing and also regarding town center, this has been presented to both council and the planning commission in the past. That said, the context has been a bit different in that there were, for us, we seized a few open questions, and we've also seen a few new ideas that have come forth through the discussion of affordable housing with council, the land use plan discussions with the planning commission, and of course, we talk to the community all, all the time in different types of forums. So lots, lots of new ideas or feedback on the ones that have been put forth. Key policy and implementation tools for affordable housing in the land use plan include most significantly water connections. We've discussed this before and understand the direction to do what can be done for the 200 connections held by CCWD, the, the water district, to be used for deed-restricted affordable housing. And we are working on that. We're not going to, we're not planning to present on that tonight. We think we, we know what we're supposed to be doing there. Also, we note the land use plan introduces lot retirement policy. Staff strongly urges that lot retirement policy not be applied to deed-restricted affordable housing development. Note that most affordable housing is multifamily and really often doesn't include much subdivision, so you're really not leaving anything on the table anyway, and we would really encourage you to consider that. That is how the draft is proposed. We have also already been working on small infill lots and of course ADUs. Those are two accessory dwelling units. Those are two good examples of strategies for more affordable housing types in locations that are already developed. Now we want to take a few minutes to look at the rest of this list, starting with PD provisions for housing affordability. Thank you. There is new policy that encourages more affordable housing types, for example, garden apartments, small units, and requirements for the 20% below-market rate deed-restricted affordable units should PDs with residential potential be developed. The intent is that if, if they were to go forward, they would become neighborhoods with mixed density, mixed income, a park, other amenities. So they were all planned as a whole, and they were intended to and they were intended to really serve the community in a different way than some of the recent development we've seen. We've received some comments about this. First and foremost, do not be alarmed about any comments about the below-market-rate requirement. This is your code right now. We didn't put something new in. This is not something, a new burden on a landowner. This is already part of your zoning ordinance. So we just want to educate folks who might not have understood that, and we're happy to explain that to them. But we don't want to get sidetracked by that. The policy question, other than that, is primarily about unit size. The draft document makes a reference to generally that there's a preference for these units to be on the order of 2,000 square feet or smaller. And we want to check in later in your discussion if that's okay, if you're liking these provisions for housing affordability in the PDs. And we'd also be interested in if council or the Planning Commission would like any additional requirements, such as emphasizing for senior housing or perhaps in some cases larger units that could accommodate extended families, other types of low, lower-trip-generation types of housing. Next. Moving on to this new permit idea that may have passed you by. It's actually a pretty significant tool that we hope you might entertain. We called it Planned Area Development Permits. It's presented early in Chapter Two, the Development Chapter. It intends to allow flexible development on sites that aren't big enough nor need PD master planning. Sites like this one here on Poplar with these four, really, they're detached as a fourplex with individual lots. I'm not quite sure how that got entitled because we don't really have the tool, but it did, and people like it. We've had a lot of great feedback about this development. So we want to make sure that this land use plan opens the door or sets the table for doing the kinds of things that are working. So this is an example of that. And if anybody has questions about it, we're happy to field these. Otherwise, the code is not really all that supportive for this type of pattern. It would require a lot of variances. It would be a challenge. Okay. Spend some time on the priority housing overlay. We've talked about this with council in the context of what's coming to you for policy for affordable housing, and of course, the Planning Commission has spent quite a bit of time thinking about this. This is a really new introduction to this land use plan, and we've had a lot of positive impact input about it, although there's also some other direction for making some tweaks around it. So it was aimed to directly target the relationship between employment and home. It was set up as a combining or overlay designation on top of a base designation. The base designations tend to be related, first of all, to priority coastal act uses, including public recreation, coastal recreation, agriculture, and horticulture. And then, as we're developing it, we expanded it to include public service uses, such as churches, schools, and some city property. This got a lot of attention, and we've been developing it further. First off, we agree with some of the input we've had. It needs a new name. We think it would do well emphasizing the workforce housing component of it. Next. In this first draft, I want you to take a look at what it would actually yield. This is, this initial draft had a capacity for about 200 units of this housing type plus potentially some additional density bonus units. We assumed 10 dwelling units per acre outside the town center, so that could apply to, for example, State Parks property. Up to an acre of that, we were looking at 10 units for them. 10 units per acre could also be combined, for example, with portions of some urban reserve or other reserved properties outside of the town center. Within the town center, we use the 25-unit-per-acre density, which is the city's current, it's about the density range that you have now in the mixed-use categories. It's on the order of 25 to 30, so we can be talking about that. And you can see how it's spread out from ag, rec, churches, schools, and city-owned. And what we're really interested in, first of all, is telling you what we've learned about this and what we'd like to do. We have a strong recommendation about this. When this draft came out, we intentionally mapped this as an overlay to show this on the map. In fact, here in this example, you can see the striped parcel on top of that light green open space reserve property down at the south end of town. We wanted people to really have a sense of where it was located and how it could be accommodated, and just to be really overt about it. At this point, we strongly recommend applying the overlay through policy instead of mapping it. And this can be developed in a high level of detail for the Planning Commission's review. We know that they have some concerns about how density bonuses would be accommodated and other important details about this overlay, and we are confident that those can be worked out. Having it mapped reduces your flexibility, and it makes it really hard if we've picked the wrong site. There could be a large farm parcel where another site emerges that's superior, and then we have to go to the Coastal Commission with a map amendment. And we don't think that's what you want to do. So really well-crafted policy is the tool that we would encourage. With regards to overlays of this type, which would require that all the units be affordable to extremely low, low, or very low-income households, there's a whole bunch of different ways to do overlays, and policy is one of them. So we're not going way far afield of how this practice is done. Next, we wanted to check in on your comfort level with the capacity of the category. It can easily be dialed up or down for any of the uses that we were just looking at in the table. We do have recommendations. We would suggest just setting the build-out for specified sites, such as the public school sites, the two churches, the city property, and the county and State Park land. And then to establish the kinds of policy rules for the other sites that are large, contain multiple parcels, and would be controlled by ESHA or hazard, visual resource, and coastal access preservation requirements. So that would allow some sense of how much it is, in fact, quite a bit of sense of that, but a little bit of flexibility about where to locate it. And we look forward to your feedback about that. I'm on my last topic. We do want to note a few more things about the town center that have developed over time. The central focus of new development has been broadly and specifically for all development types as well as housing strategies. It's already been discussed, but there's more to it in the town center. Densities are higher in this area. Mixed use is emphasized. Different types of density bonuses could be used, such as those for transfer of development rights as a receiver from planned developments outside of the town center area. For tonight, though, we've talked about those things, but we wanted to focus on a few infill sites, two PD areas and a few other areas that were new ideas that we've had since receiving some direction from city council about further pushing and focusing on town center. So first of all, I apologize. I didn't know the map was going to be delayed. That is our town center map, and we can always refer back to it. The Podesta PD, in the 1996 Certified Local Coastal Program, Podesta is shown with a maximum build-out of 125 units and light industrial uses with a rather elaborate phasing requirement, which frankly, the phasing is quite contrary to how projects actually come together. In this draft, the residential build-out was maintained with acknowledgement of what a density bonus could include, could add to that, which, by the way, would be allowed under your existing land use plan. However, the existing plan never really acknowledged those extra units. So we just want to be clear that we aren't adding these on top. You already have a provision that would have required that in some cases. The non-residential use was proposed to be changed to encourage more support service-oriented uses, such as, and you've heard Brittany already mention this, but assisted living, childcare, and uses of that nature are those that community members have told us they're really concerned about. And so we were trying to find sites for those uses throughout the planning area. And then with this Podesta, 34 and 1/2 acres, there was room left over for a nice-sized park. But here we are. As Brittany already noted, the Coastal Commission staff has advised that we remove the build-out numbers. This is challenging in the town center where densities are intended to be higher. And we're working with Coastal Commission staff on how specifically to deal with town center PDs because we think they are, there's potential for more confusion and misunderstood expectations of what they can hold with those higher densities potentially being allowed. So that kind of threw us a little bit. It's a lot easier for us to work with it outside of the town center, but we wanted to highlight that for you. And if you have any specific interest and feedback about how Podesta should be developed, that would help us in our conversations with them. Now, this one, Andriadi PD, there's 3 and 1/2 acres of Highway 92 fronting properties that are substantially undeveloped. In the draft plan, we showed those for light industrial or live-work kind of configuration. We were really focused on a low-trip-generation type of use. We were concerned about access. And in fact, the PD has a policy for consolidating points of access to not create any new points of access to 92. And that was even discussed with the property owner, who was comfortable with that. So that idea from that Andriadi PD, if we put it into land use designations instead, that can be done with a light industrial designation with some kind of acknowledgement if you wanted it to be combined with live-work, which is a designation the city doesn't have right now. And so we can create that, and we can get zoning for that, too. That's not new. That's been done in lots of places. I've written one of those codes, so we can work with you if you're interested in that or give us other direction for those properties in particular. Other three infill sites we wanted to tell you about. One is in the draft plan already, but we just want to make sure everybody knows. Hilltop Mobile Home Park on Highway 92 is on both sides of the road. On the north side of the road, the Goat Farm property to the east is currently in a light industrial designation. The MHP label, that's Mobile Home Park. The draft plan proposes that Goat Hill would be redesignated to Mobile Home Park to accommodate an expansion of the Mobile Home Park in that area. There's also a parcel still by Kenyatta Cove that has a Mobile Home Park designation, and we would recommend keeping it. 10% of the city's housing stock is mobile homes. It's a really important housing type for Hafmain Bay, and that's why we would propose to have you consider changing it. I'm reticent about changing industrial designations because industrial is a precious land use. But for this one particular case, we would ask you to consider it just because of the synergy of what's already there and the need for that land use. Two other, whoops, two other infill sites that we'll talk about in just a sec are, one is East Downtown, so the property's really to the east of Johnston Street and Miramonte Street. And then the east side of Poplar, so between Highway One and Main Street through to Metzger. We've not presented this before. The Planning Commission has not seen this. City Council said to us recently, and housing discussions too, yes, we like all those interesting things you've told us about emphasizing the town center. We want you to do more. So these were a couple spots where we thought we could do a bit more and wanted you to think about that. This slide is showing the East Downtown parcels outlined in a blue boundary. And they're next to the, so you can see Main Street, that pink color. That's our commercial downtown mixed-use designation. It really covers the historic portion of downtown. The brighter red piece is a commercial residential zoning district that was meant to be a transition from the higher-density downtown area to lower-density residential. And you can see the yellow color, it's actually R1 zoning. It's single-family residential zoning, and most of that is single-family. But it's so close into downtown that we do wonder about its potential. It's in a medium-density designation in the land use plan, which is consistent with its R1 zoning. It would also be consistent with R2 zoning, but that's your duplex district. In the R1 district, you can already add ADUs, so it's not really doing much. So we would encourage you to think about popping it up to the high-density designation, which might allow for R3, or conversely, expanding the commercial downtown designation, which is, it's a really nice designation because it has a lower height limit of 28 feet, but allows mixed use and allows multifamily. And it could be really flexible. And we don't want to go too strong with density here because we do have a lot of historic resources. So we know there's some edges around this, but we wanted to bring it to your attention. We thought it was a little unusual to be maintaining R1 so close to Main Street in this area. We know it could also be very sensitive to people, so just an idea. And then this is...
Point of clarification.
Sure.
You're using the language infill sites. There aren't a lot of empty sites on East Downtown. So what you're talking about is changing the zoning designation so we can have more flexibility.
Yeah, there is a little bit of vacant land in there, not a lot in this one. You're right. This is more of filling in the sites that are there. Yes, that's fair. That's absolutely fair. The next one is more classic infill, which is Poplar. The frontage is at Poplar, on both sides of Poplar, between Highway One and Main Street, and then running south all the way to Metzger. This is in a medium-density designation. The zoning is R2, and there's a lot of vacant, this is some of your biggest vacant land downtown other than the property over by Our Lady of the Pillar, right behind us right now. And we just wanted to bring this one to your attention. It could be planned at a bit higher density, and you could get more yield out of it. It's in the town center. We also looked at Main Street frontage, and we did not find much opportunity for, there were no vacant sites. There was not much room for densification. The lots were small, so we did not bring that idea forward. We were hunted around downtown looking for corridor planning, which was something that we hadn't really done before within downtown. So it was looking kind of from the perspective of districts and corridors. East Downtown is kind of a little mini district, and this is a chunk of a corridor. All right, and we are getting close to done. Additional considerations for supporting the town center development. One idea is categorical exclusion areas. We know that some folks are really concerned about doing that. Categorical exclusion areas can reduce or eliminate or exempt... Categorical exclusion areas can, um, reduce or eliminate or exempt a certain kinds of development from coastal development permit requirements. We are not proposing to have a categorical exclusion area that includes Pillar Cedos Creek, or that would allow a big new building in downtown. The idea here would be for really minor things like change of use of existing development, or an addition to existing development. We can't do that right now. We can't even allow residential to come in without a use permit right now. We've talked about that with, with both, uh, council and planning commission separately. So, Brittany prepared this boundary just as an example of where we don't have ESHA. Yes, we know there's some historic resources in there, um, but we could potentially qualify for a categorical exclusionary. The land use, uh, your certified land use plan in the zoning code right now describes categorical exclusion areas, and, um, it, it actually gives some really good guidance for how to do them. So, we just want to reassure you, if this is something you wanted to pursue, that this is doable, and in fact, was encouraged by Coastal Commission staff. They don't want to see us, um, coming up with permits that could potentially be appealed to them for things that really aren't of that level of significance to the Coastal Commission. We, we can handle these things. So, we would encourage doing this not only downtown, but also, there's some, um, nice, uh, sizable pieces of established neighborhoods that could also qualify. We would not, again, encourage doing this for brand-new buildings. This is, this is more about smoothing things out for easy, easy projects. All right. Just for reference for tonight, the land use map is in Chapter two of your binders, it's on page nine. Uh, we have it in our slides, so if anybody's trying to point something out, we've got that here. And a note about the rest of the plan, we obviously have focused tonight on Chapter two. Uh, for the other chapters, just a quick note, Chapter four, agriculture, we've done a lot of work on that, and we've had a lot of input, and it's in, we believe it's in pretty good shape. Uh, we will keep working with property owners who are most concerned about it. With Chapter five, coastal access and rec, um, we believe there's a lot of buy-in to it because it's wholly consistent with the recently adopted bicycle and pedestrian master plan and the parks master plan, and we had very straightforward input about it from Coastal Commission staff. Chapter six, natural resources, Coastal Commission staff wants some simplifications on, uh, a number of things, including buffers. We are going to be working on that, we are not going to present anything about that tonight. Chapter seven, coastal hazards, uh, staff actually received a compliment on coastal hazards chapter from the Coastal Commission staff, they thought it was so well-done. So, that one, we believe is in good shape, although they want us to rearrange it a little bit, but it's, um, they liked it. Chapter eight, cultural resources, is in great shape. We had no public comments on it, and the Coastal Commission staff was absolutely fine with it. The Planning Commission put a lot of input into it, it's all included. It's a chapter that we may need to break apart and put a piece of it into a general plan element, depending on Coastal Commission direction, but we consider that one to be basically practically done. Chapter nine, scenic and visual resources, holds some challenges, and we are figuring them out. Um, and that leaves, anything else you would like to discuss about development? Um, consideration of the framework for the plan in Chapter one? And then, of course, we haven't talked about public works tonight, and we're not planning to. We have not discussed build-out, such as what does build-out mean, uh, what's the planning horizon, and what's the infrastructure capacity? So, we know there's some great big topics like those that are not before you tonight. You have enough with PD's housing and town center, and, uh, we hope that background was helpful, and, uh, we're happy to entertain clarifying questions or encourage you to move into your public comment period.
Thank you, Jill. That was useful. Uh, there's a lot here, obviously. Are there any clarifying questions? Are there, do I have any blue cards, or? And because of the complex nature, uh, if somebody needs more than three minutes, uh, and just takes a reasonable amount of time, it's, that makes sense to me. Our first speaker is Mike Ferrera, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Hello, Mayor Reubert. Thank you very much, council members. I'll try not to abuse the three-minutes thing, though I easily could. The, uh, I'll just try to rattle through this fairly quickly. Podesta, in my time on the council and the planning commission, the one difficulty with podesta was always circulation. It was a developable site until you thought about circulation. And so, for twenty years, I've been waiting to see how a hundred and twenty-five could be put there. But the increase that's projected, I just can't see that, but it would be nice to see it. And before we talk about that, to have that description of how circulation can be done, to justify it, that would be great. Uh, the property on ninety-two, also known as Andriati, um, the problem there, obviously, is another circulation problem. I don't think you can make a left turn going westbound to get in there unless it's done earlier and then accesses across properties, so if you're gonna do something there, that needs some unique circulation solution relative to ninety-two, because that's the only access, is ninety-two. Sort of similar to the property down at, uh, the corner of ninety-two and one. Regarding, uh, the Goat Hill zoning, uh, we did, uh, propose our zoning for that property some fifteen years ago, and the property owner refused it. It was also the, an eighteen-month battle between the Coastal Commission and the Department of Housing over whether they would accept, uh, what's laid out in our zoning ordinance. So, I'm just trying to point out that I think there's, that's a bumpy road there. Carter Hill has no public access, there is only some private access with certain individuals and the water company across the school property. Otherwise, it's, uh, Foothill, which, last quote I saw twenty years ago or thereabouts was seventeen million dollars to do the intersection, Foothill Road, just, just for less than a mile. So, uh, Pacific Ridge, I have to discuss that because Pacific Ridge, as it currently stands, is a three-way agreement between the Coastal Commission, the city, and the developer, and it entails the open space, it entails the stoplight, it entails the density, it's substantial money, the city's commitment to creating, uh, lot retirement ordinance. It's all a big rap, and it's not finished yet. So, my input to the planning commission was patience, wait for it to get done before you change it. Should just leave it as a PUD until all the, the things have been done. Uh, and then to the CAT X, the Committee for Greenwood Hills and the Sea Air Club, have an appeal at the Coastal Commission now over a CAT X. They can be, this is in the county jurisdiction, and it's on the next agenda, the Coastal, they, they can be troublesome, and it kind of, to a certain degree, takes things out of public view. So, for that reason, we would ask you to be very cautious in your consideration of that. Obviously, I could keep going, but thank you for your patience thus far.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, the Coastal Commission is meeting November thirteenth through fifteenth at the Oceano Hotel, those who are interested. Lenny Roberts, followed by, uh, Casey Branscombe.
Good evening, Mayor Harvey, and council members and commissioners and staff. I, I, I want to extend some compliments to the staff for all the work that has been done on this and continues to be done. Um, it's a very complicated document, it's a complicated challenge. Um, and I, I just like, I, I've said some of this to the Planning Commission before, but I, I'll, I'll repeat it. I think it, just, what, as sort of as an overview, I think it's widely acknowledged that the Coastal Act's Chapter Three policies, which are the policies that govern development, um, they comprise the most complete and comprehensive land use planning and zoning policies in the country. They've also stood the test of time because they were enacted by the state legislature in nineteen-seventy-six, and they still are almost the same as when they were enacted. Um, it's interesting that we've spent a lot of time tonight talking about housing because under the Coastal Act, housing is the lowest priority of all the land uses. Um, the highest priority is agriculture, second is coastal-dependent industry, third is visitor-serving recreation, and the fourth is residential. Um, affordable housing was in the Coastal Act from, for five years, from nineteen-seventy-six till eighty-one. Um, in nineteen-eighty-one, because cities were objecting to having it in their LCPs, um, the state legislature repealed the commission's statutory authority to protect and provide affordable housing. So, now, um, it's voluntary by cities and counties, and some of them have affordable housing, some of them don't. Um, San Mateo County does, and I think it's, it's certainly appropriate that Half Moon Bay does, but it's, it's still, you have, have to understand that priority of, of all the different land uses. Um, also, Half Moon Bay and the mid-coast urban communities have a surplus of housing relative to local workforce employment, so any new housing, unless it's adequately restricted to serve local workforce needs for persons of lower moderate income, will almost certainly increase the area's commuter-dependent patterns of growth with unacceptable impacts on Highways ninety-two and Highway one. So, um, we, to, to, um, just to make some specific comments, uh, we support the workforce housing overlay, except for the one, um, new area, which is county parklands, as there are no designated county parklands within the city. Um, the county does own some land, but it's not gonna be a county park, so I don't think it, it's appropriate to put, um, that site is also the former county dump site. So, um, for various public policy reasons, I think housing doesn't belong there. Um, the town center policies, we support exempting affordable housing, uh, from the lot retirement program. Um, and I don't know, I have a question as to whether mobile home parks are actually required to be affordable, or is it just by nature of their, um, the, the nature of the, um, housing?
Jill, if you want to answer, go ahead.
You can answer later. Okay. Um, we do remain skeptical that a, um, transfer development rights program is necessary. If, um, the city does include a TDR program, a really critical component will be for any applicant to have proof of legality of any parcels that are proposed to be transferred. That's gonna be a critical issue. And, um, as far as the town center, where, um, there was a, um, provision in there in tonight's presentation or in tonight's staff report about reduced setbacks for residential development, and, um, I'm not sure exactly how that would be applied, but, um, just in general, I think front yard setbacks are important to maintain the small-town character of the town, um, and the, just of the visual amenities. Um, and side yard and backyard setbacks are important for fire safety, for fire, fire equipment to access the sides and rears of homes, as well as for light and air, so those are something you need to sort of keep in mind. Um, with regard to the plan, the idea of, um, completed plan developments, um, and re-designating them, um, as residential, um, I think that one thing that you need to also keep in mind is that we're, there's, you've seen a number of bills in the legislature in the last two or three years that are, um, providing statewide mandates to local government, particularly for housing. And many of the completed PDs have special constraints, and we think that, you know, you're not necessarily going to be helping the situation if you, uh, convert some of the PDs to residential zoning districts and then have a state mandate that will come down on top of those already completed PDs. That's just something to keep in mind. Um, and, um, I think, did Mike, did you cover, I didn't, didn't hear whether Mike covered the concern about reducing the minimum buffer for, uh, from ESHA, um, through specific biological reports, um, if he already said so, I, I didn't-
He hasn't.
He has not, okay. Um, we are concerned about that. There have been experiences that I've been aware of in, in the past, particularly in the county, where, um, property owners and consultants can either fail to identify biological resources, or in the case of some creative landowners that I have had to deal with in the past in the county, they would actually work to eliminate them entirely, um, if they presented some kind of inconvenient impediment to their development plans. Um, and finally, um, in the, um, glossary, uh, there is a definition of resource-dependent use. Uh, the Planning Commission knows my concern about that, and I think maybe that got resolved at the Planning Commission, it wasn't in the staff presentation tonight, but, um, a resource-dependent use is, is one that, um, a use that has to depend, depends on the area or the resources within an environmentally sensitive habitat area in order to be able to function at all. And there's three land uses that have been put in there, which include horseback riding, bicycle and pedestrian trails, and low-impact campgrounds that are included in that definition, and they just really don't belong there. They do not need, they do not depend upon being in a wetland, for example, in order to be able to function at all, so I, that, that just seems totally inconsistent. I know it was requested by another agency, but I think that was kind of a, um, uh, maybe not too consistent with other policies. So, thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you, Lenny. Casey Branscombe, followed by Judy Taylor.
Thank you, council and planning commission, and I'd like to make a shout-out for Jill over here. I believe she's worked tirelessly on this plan over the last year. Um, I think I've been to absolutely every meeting. I actually read every word of this. How many of you can raise your hand and say you have read every word? All right, good, then you know what's in here. So, I've, uh, been in Half Moon Bay about fifteen years, I moved my Branscombe farm operation from Morgan Hill here, um, in two thousand and four. Um, I own five parcels of urban reserve, seventy-five acres, um, surrounding Sea Haven, the subdivision. Um, the property is zoned urban reserve, there's a long legacy, which I'm sure you can read about and look at in the current plan, you know, which states, um, what the sort of promise of future development and expansion potential and whatnot, you know, would be of the property. But that's not really what I'm here to ask you to call your attention to. I believe everybody here is well-intended. I believe everybody here really does see these kind of open rural properties, the farmland, the horses, Terry Andriati's farm stand, you know, the, the properties that are not in dense residential development, as somehow important parts of Half Moon Bay, you know, that they're culturally, the people, I mean, I, I have, uh, between, depending, I've got one in Mexico right now, ten and eleven employees, um, half of them don't speak English, most of them have worked for me for more than twenty-five years. We're a clinical breeding laboratory for UC Davis, we're probably the third or fourth most recognized- We're probably the third or fourth most recognized Holsteiner breeder in the world. We've produced out of Half Moon Bay animals that have gone on to go to the World Cup, all kinds of, certainly in breeding, you know, we're one of the best-known farms around. And it's a struggle every day in Half Moon Bay, just to keep the business open, just to keep my payroll made every two weeks. And that's not all your problem, but what is your problem? Is if people like me go out of business because the regulatory framework is a death of a thousand paper cuts, when there's so many policies, some of which are genuinely supportive, that I really believe, you know, Jill has made an effort to listen, you know, to what's needed to keep these kind of rural land uses alive and keep these commercial businesses. I pay, you know, a significant amount in property tax every year. I figured it out, it's more than one-third of my pre-tax income goes to property taxes in Half Moon Bay. So I make a contribution. I run a small business, all of my employees' workman's comp, all of the various things I learned today, I have to do sexual harassment training, you know, for my, almost all male employees. But, but I guess what I'd like to say is, take the time to actually learn what these businesses need to survive. Have a little compassion for the fact that we actually love our land. We care about the environmental resources on the property. We care about water conservation. We care about it looking nice and being good citizens in our community. Ask our neighbors how we're doing as neighbors. And then ask yourself, do you really need 250 policies to tell me how to manage my water, what trees I can cut, you know, what size of open mare shelter I can put up in a field, whether I can pave my road, when I can bring in rock to, you know, to clean the drainage? I mean, it's just, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I read everything, I commented, I have done the good citizen job, and at the end of it, and I don't think of myself as a stupid person, but I actually can't tell if I can continue to operate profitably in Half Moon Bay under this. That's all. I just ask you to really, you know, if you want people like me to stay in Half Moon Bay and survive, you know, just realize that when you look for open space, and, you know, just because there aren't houses there, you know, doesn't mean it's a public resource. If you really want it as a public resource, either for conservation, or for view corridors, or for whatever else, then go raise a bond issue and come buy it. But otherwise, let me run my business and survive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, K.C. Judy Taylor, followed by Kristin Geith. Pete?
Good evening. I would like to, I'm up here as Judy Taylor, a 45-year resident, and I'm also speaking on behalf of SAMCAR, the San Mateo County Association of Rural Tourists. Like to echo the comments that have come before. Your staff have really been doing an amazing job here. They have anticipated a lot, and I really credit them for that. One of the things that I think does need to be addressed, though, at this juncture, is that those of us who have been around for a while have a lot of mistrust of this process, for two reasons. One is that things get put in, and then 20 years later, we try to do something, and we go back and use that language, and we find that it doesn't allow us to do the things that we really want and need to do. And some of that may be intentional, some of it is unintentional, but that does create a problem for many of us. And then there's the part where this community has, well, the Beechwood decision was basically because there was a fight about how this, how this stuff was supposed to be dealt with. And the community did not win in any way, shape, or form. And so, there is some mistrust here, and just want to let you know that that is out there. And I also have to say that a lot of my trust has been rebuilt in working with, with your staff and in going through the document, and I am one of the people that has read every word of it. One of the issues that we have, we being SAMCAR, is the lot retirement program. Any of these, we are trying to deal with the fact that right now our building costs are at 500 a foot, and that's after we pay you, and that's after we buy the land. So when you, when you folks add fees, and a lot retirement is a fee, what happens in the real world? If somebody spends $20,000 to buy a lot to retire it in order to build a unit, that cost gets absorbed, and that pushes the price of that unit up, and everybody gets that. What you don't get is that that creates a new comp for the 12-year-old house next door. And that money goes into the seller's pocket, and it creates, and it impacts affordability across the market. So I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, but just please be aware that you are not, you are exacerbating the affordability problem when you require that to happen. That's just the way the real world works. I had, I was kind of amusing to hear Lenny list the four categories, and one and three.
Go ahead, Jill.
Okay. The Coastal Commission has said, you, the coast site, San Mateo County coast site, you will do agriculture and you will do visitor serving. Both of those require lots of low-paying jobs, and both of those create traffic. And you're not going to be able to do affordable housing, and you're not going to be able to fix your roads. Have at it, folks, have a good time. That's really a box that we get put into every which way, every day on the coast. And there is the right of individual property owners to use their property. That is a fundamental civil liberty entrenched in the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution. Please don't dismiss that. And I'm not sensing that that's happening, but that, that is the kind of thing that does happen down the road. One of the other things that happens that creates the mistrust for us is that we go through these hearings, and I'm here watching the clock, hoping that I can get home and shower before the electricity's turned off and I don't have any more hot water. We come out and do these kinds of things and participate and spend hours reading these documents, and there's a negotiation that happens as we move through the city process, and then as the city negotiates with the Coastal Commission. And our experience has been that the Coastal Commission leans on you guys and makes things happen that we never saw in any of our public hearings. And that's just the nature of the beast, and the more light that can be put on that so that we know about it, so that we don't come to the final hearing with two minutes at the podium to say what's wrong with six different things that we have never seen before, that will help the process a lot. Two other things, and then I'll quit. We need high-paying jobs. The only way that we are going to fix many of our problems is to have a robust and vigorous economic development program that gets employers to bring jobs here to employ locals. We're not going to get highway, we're not going to get people off the road any other way, and we don't want to create a reverse commute. So it's going to take the community coming together with the chamber, with you folks, with the county, and try to figure out, how do we get jobs here for the people who live here? That's, we have to do that. And the last thing is, I really like the, what's happening with the small development things, where we can take a piece of property and get creative with it. Please, 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 make that something that we can really use a lot. And forgive me, I'm going to head home now.
Good luck, good luck. Kristin?
Thank you very much. I would just like to bring a note about the Section III that's on the public works area. On page 14 of that section, there's a mention in there about the job growth, and there's just a little bit of an inconsistency in the projected numbers of job growth versus what's kind of out there through the EDD and the state. So I just would like to invite the staff member in charge of that section to work with the chamber on getting some stats that might be a little bit more current, because I think it's very important that our public works and the part of the document that has to do with that and building out the downtown center and such things have best possible numbers to work off of. So, it currently approximates that in 2018, Half Moon Bay had 5,379 jobs. According to the State of California EDD, it was actually 7,700 jobs. So, later in that paragraph, it notes that the projected cap of jobs in our area is 7,684, which, according to EDD, we've already hit that. So, it's important to us that the business community is represented and that we can help them grow in the way that they need to grow. And so we would really like to work on getting some numbers that are a little bit more consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. We seem to have one last blue card. Roy Salome?
I didn't plan to speak, but first of all, for another day, I'm going to rise to the defense of low, low-impact campgrounds and resource dependency, but we'll do that at another time. I fully support affordable housing. I do understand that we have this mechanism of deed-restricted affordable housing, and this is very, very early in the process. We don't have projects approved, but we do need low-income housing, workforce housing, farmworker housing, teacher and law enforcement housing. I do understand that. I also think that, that you should have in mind some kind of enforcement mechanism to maintain the deed restriction and keep it active over time. We've had affordable housing that has morphed away from its original deed restriction, so there's, as, as the, as the folks in the affordable housing move up and are no longer low-income, defined as low-income, there has to be a mechanism to allow new people to come in who are of, who fit the qualification of the deed restriction. So I'm putting it in your, in, in your ear right now. It's very, very early, but I think this is something that's absolutely critical as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Counsel, before we begin on individual issues like PDs, does anyone want to talk about more high-level issues that concern him or her? Okay. Have at it. Jill says that if there's a particular PD that you want to discuss, you should bring it up, so. Counsel, does anyone have any PDs they'd like to talk about? When I say counsel, I mean counsel or planning commissioners, the folk on the dais here.
I was getting a little shy because I didn't want to speak out of turn, Harvey.
Okay, I'm off, I'm just so used to counsel being here, so, Rick, go for it.
I wanted to comment on some of the things that Mike Farrar mentioned, in particular about Ocean Colony and Podesta. We've kind of punted this around the Planning Commission quite a bit, and we landed in agreement with where city staff are, that we don't want to, we don't want to mess with Ocean Colony. We don't want to start changing this from a PUD, so we disagree with the Coastal Commission's opinion here. We think there's a history of self-governance that's going on within Ocean Colony. There are a lot of restrictions there. It's worked reasonably well. Applying regular zoning to that area could create a lot of unintended consequences, would be something that shouldn't be done lightly. Similarly, the Podesta lot has been, well, I won't comment on the Podesta lot, I'm just, I'll stick with the Ocean Colony.
Jimmy?
Thank you, and thank you for having us tonight. I had, I had a question about the Dolores area that's not going forward, but before I ask, is it, is it, does anybody have a conflict issue they need to get out? So, the question is, does the existing planned development structure facilitate the pattern that exists there now? In other words, is it, is what we have sort of inconsistent with the existing PD in some way?
We're going to make sure we understand the question. Right now, the land use designation is residential, and there's a range of uses in the area which are, and the zoning is also residential. There are some homes there, there's a church, there's childcare, and there's general consistency because those quasi-public uses are allowed in residential zoning areas.
Okay. Shifting to the conversation about categorical exemptions, one of the touchpoints in the conversation was that they might relieve the Coastal Commission of an appeal burden, and I was just looking at it and thinking, that's really east of the westernmost through road, and it was hard for me to see how an appeal could get to them. So I'm not sure I understood the thinking.
We understand the comment. We, we would probably avoid appeals jurisdictions anyway, so we agree. Thank you for clarifying.
No worries. And then, with respect to the comment that came from Mr. Salome earlier and came up in the staff report, the value of deed restriction in perpetuity, I, if I recall correctly, the Main Street development went in with such a restriction, and are there, are there proposals that, are there other areas that don't enjoy that, that perpetual restriction now? Have I just forgotten?
You've got a range of terms for the deed restrictions and even some affordable units that aren't protected by them. The standard is 55 years now, which is, we intend to have them be in perpetuity. The city's housing consultant is here, and if I need pitch hitting from Bill Lowell on this question, we can bring him up in a while, but we'll go ahead and save up your housing questions if need be.
Okay. There was, one of the things that was new was that, can you put up the picture for the Poplar Fourplex, that illustration? Right. So, is that four different lots, or is that one lot with four different things on it?
Those are four lots. They must have cross easements for access, and that's been there a while, and I did the research on it so long ago that I can't remember everything I found, although what I do remember is lots of people like it, and they want flexibility like that. So the tool that we referred to, I'm going to find the page number in your document.
Press the button, Steve.
That's right, that's right. That's between Highway 1 and Main Street, so it's in the east Poplar area. Page 216, at the bottom of the page, includes the planned area development permit concept that, that was part of the development chapter that came out in December.
Okay, so I, so my thought about that is that for, for shared easements, for interims to Nigress, that sounds really reasonable. I'm not sure what else is, you know, how much additional flexibility is implied. It sounds like it could be quite broad, and I want to be sure I understand the scope before I say, yeah, great idea. before I say, yeah, great idea.
So typically, this is a tool that you'll find in a lot of different codes in different formats. It can be done through zoning. It can be done through a permit. Typically, the key is to maintain neighborhood compatibility and to not go over the density of the land use designation or the zone. So you're still within the realm of, and the intent, for example, in this example of the R2 district, but R2 would usually have two units on one lot, which could be rented. This created an ownership option with actual land ownership with it. So it's just another layer of flexibility.
I see.
Okay.
Then on the slide that showed the Housing Affordability Workforce Housing Overlay Strategy, the table. I'm sorry, am I not getting through? If I swallow the microphone, is that better? I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me know. So do I need to repeat any of that, or are we good? Okay, thanks. So in this, in some of the earlier drafts, there was a distinction for different church sites or different school sites, and this one kind of lumps it together, and that's a lot of units to slosh around. So I'm wondering, I mean, is this just presented for simplification tonight, or did you visualize still splitting them up in the document?
So this was presented for simplification tonight. So for example, the Lutheran Church, right now in this draft, had 10 units, and the Catholic Church had 40. And that was because the Lutheran Church had less land available for the use, and it was at the lower density. The Catholic Church is in the town center and had a larger site. We didn't want to line item this and cause too much consternation about it. That said, we would like input about, if folks are, for example, really interested in the schools, Cunha had more because of the town center location. I can't, we'll have to go back and look. Out of the 60 units, I think it might have been half of them, and maybe 15 were at Hatch and 15 were at the high school. Those are round numbers. And the city-owned property was meant to be 555 Kelly. Certainly, there could be more city property included in it, but we were focused on the Agcock Community Center area with the parking lot area that the city owns. Because it's in the town center, the city owns other properties. We've even talked about some of them tonight, but we didn't think any of them were appropriate for the overlay.
Thank you. And just one more wonky thing, and then I'll get away.
Go for it. Go for it, Mr. Wonk.
And that was with respect to the, just touching back on the categorical exclusion area. I understand that it's constrained, and the intention is to improve the quality while reducing the overhead of doing development in a place that we might want to see more development. What concerns me, and I don't, maybe I just don't understand the details enough, is that when I read about the categorical exclusion definitions in the Coastal Act, it seems to say this is where no coastal development permit is required. And it's not that there's no coastal development permit with respect to infrastructure or with respect to ESHA. It's no coastal development permit. And so maybe I'm not understanding how we maintain the protections that are built into the Coastal Act to allow us to ensure that the development that happens in those areas is consistent with the Coastal Act. So I'm struggling a little bit with that, and I don't doubt the intention, but I'm not clear on the mechanism.
And can we chime in a tiny bit? We direct you to look at your zoning code, local coastal development permits, and look at the exemptions. It's essentially another classification of exemption, and it would have a whole bunch of rules around it, and staff would be happy to meet with you and dig deeper into the weeds. We presented this understanding that there would be concerns about it, so we're happy to keep working on it.
Okay. With respect to now pulling back and talking about specific areas, I want to register, I appreciate the thinking about Pacific Ridge and Ocean Colony as maybe maintaining their planned development status. It does look to me like possibly the Altamira-Cosmer area perhaps could shift a little bit, but I do worry about some of the raft of new regulations for fire protection or for housing. And to be sure we understand how those, you know, the ramifications of those as we read through our new LCP, those things are really fresh, and we didn't have them when we built these. So with respect to a lot of the other planned developments, that's something I'd like to be sure we've thought about pretty carefully and make sure we know that, so we're going in with our eyes wide open. So thanks for giving me the floor.
Can I just comment on that? Jimmy, when we talk about planned development, we have a whole hazards chapter, which I think will take into account the new policies, and the hazards chapter will override planned development.
I don't know if the state regulations would let us do that. I just don't, maybe you've looked at those regs?
I haven't, no.
Yeah.
That's, I was trying to get a clarification of, like, I think the hazards chapter should set aside policies, but I don't know. I mean...
Yeah, I want to know too.
Does anybody else want to know anything?
Are you able to hear me? No.
Okay. There we go. Much better. Well, I first just want to thank staff. I think the staff has done an incredible job, and I actually heard the Committee for Greenfoothills Sierra Club and the County Association of Realtors recognize the good work of staff. So I think that's a good combination, good tryout. And I also heard the words rebuilding trust, so thank you, Jill. Having been a part of this process from the beginning and seeing different consultants coming in and everything else, I think where we're at now is an incredible amount of work. I think you've done a great job of listening to the community and listening to us and really working through some tough issues, so I think that's great. The question came up about uses in coastal resource-dependent zones, and that came up, I think, at our last Planning Commission meeting, and the question about campgrounds and that sort of thing. I want to make sure I was clear. I did not read that as campgrounds should be located within ESHA. I was thinking resource-dependent zones, we're just referring to coastal resources in general, and I do support that. But certainly, I think, you know, placing those types of facilities in actual ESHA, yeah, I completely concur with that. So I'm not sure, I'm just not understanding the definition of resource right, or if there's sort of different definitions that the Coastal Commission has, so just to clear that up. I really like the strategy on the workforce housing, and I think, I appreciate, Jill, your comments on dealing with that through real focus policy and not trying to constrain us through specifically mapping that, so I know you requested for feedback on that. And then beyond that, you know, I think the town center infill sites, I've long been supportive of the infill sites. I think the expansion of the Mobile Home Park provides a real accessible opportunity to provide some expanded affordable housing in a way that is, seems really doable and sort of at the fingertips, and I support that area for that. So those are some of my big comments for now. I'll pass it over to others.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else, Commissioner or City Council person?
A couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it, Steve.
Thank you. I want to repeat the praise that staff has received for its hard work and the clarity of the presentation as it exists now. I think you all have done a lot of real diligent work since we, especially since we got the Coastal Commission staff input, and I think you've clarified that a lot. I feel like I understand it even a little more sharply tonight than previously. But along those lines, just to be sure that I'm correct, that I understand it, let me ask you, my understanding is that in the Chapter Two, that the so-called general policies or factored policies, 278 through 2100, these will remain in the body of the plan, whereas the policies that were authored specifically for specific and individual PDs will not.
I can speak to that quickly. So yes, based on the Coastal Commission staff's input and the following discussions that we've held with them, we understand the need to remove the policies specific to each individual PD while keeping the factored or the general policies that you referred to that would still apply to all of the remaining PDs. And those would capture every concern that are in a little more detail in each individual PD, but allow the flexible master planning process.
Good. And when we talk about the narrative remaining in Chapter Two, what exactly, can you, is there an easy example of what kind of narrative we're talking about there? I know it's not as prescriptive as in the previous draft.
So your packet from the last study session, October 8, I believe I was, had an attachment from a Coastal Commission staffer who redlined the narrative for the Venice Beach PD, essentially removing anything that was quantitative and leaving the description of the general site constraints and the intended land uses for the PD.
And that was the exact answer for the PDs, and I just want to clarify, was your question about narrative for Chapter Two PD-specific or for the chapter as a whole? Because we also received some feedback about just the amount of detail that the document included in terms of background, and some of the concern that I think we've heard tonight is about maintaining the story and really the whole process of what's happened since you first got a local coastal program and over time. So one of the directions we heard was to possibly move some of it if it was extraneous and really not absolutely necessary for supporting certain policies, that it could be put into an appendix of the land use plan, or it could be put into a general plan element. It could find a home somewhere. We didn't want to lose it.
Well, that makes sense, and I wouldn't expect you to have an example prose of that on hand right now. While I have the floor, just one question about the categorical exclusion area that Vice Chair Benjamin brought up. I'm a little fuzzy on whether implementing that is the idea to benefit Coastal Commission staff in not having to deal with appeals, or is it to streamline our workflow at City Hall, or is it to make life easier for residents who want to do projects there?
I think it could be a number of those things, and in particular, we're finding that we have to do more process for certain kinds of uses that are principally permitted in a zone in particular. So housing downtown, even if there's existing development, faces both a use permit and a coastal development permit in, if, let's say it's an upstairs office that the owner would like to convert it to a housing unit. We're suggesting that that's okay to make that conversion. There are a number of things that would have to happen. It would need a building permit. We'd have to check the water connection requirements. There's all kinds of pieces and parts to that that would get checked, but we're not really sure that we would need to have, by the way, that combination of things requires a public hearing before the Planning Commission. And so we're just not sure that that's something that you need to be doing, and it's not really aligned with the intent of facilitating housing in a mixed-use district where residential is principally permitted use. To put a principally permitted use through a public hearing is rather unusual.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I guess the challenge in figuring that out would be, you would want to be pretty conservative and define very tightly the things that would be permitted, and then I think staff would have to judge, well, are there going to be enough of those things to make it worth the trouble? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Robert, do you have something?
You know, just a point on that issue that the Coastal Commission brought up about, you know, streamlining the details, the historical detail. If there's one thing I would definitely push back on, is keeping as much of that detail as possible. I mean, unless we can download everything Lenny Roberts and Mike Farrar knows on some kind of hard drive, having that detail is very important because future bodies that make, will either be making regulations or interpreting them, will always look to what was the intention behind these guidelines and regulations. I mean, that's what we do in courts, in Supreme Court. They always go back to 100 years of detail. What did they really mean by that particular piece of, something in the Constitution or regulation, et cetera? What was the intention? And it's only that historical detail that's unique to our community and our development that will really help others understand the intention and make better decisions and interpretations about what we meant, so that would be my thoughts. Thanks.
Debbie?
So I concur with a lot, if not all, of what the Coastal Commission said in their letter. I think it's really important to keep the language around the PUDs flexible. I do agree that there's too much in there right now, and I'd like us to see something that, without all the programmatic stuff, a lot of it seems to me to be like implementation actions that maybe belong in the zoning code instead. To Robert's point about the historical detail, I think that's important stuff. I just don't think it should be in the LUP, rather than a supporting document as an exhibit or an attachment or something like that. Maybe we see it as a bridge between the land use plan and the zoning implementation. You know, it starts to set out a path, how we get from one to the other, but it's not something that we send on, you know, to the Coastal Commission. It needs to be something, when somebody wants to develop, they go to it, they look at the policies, and they can easily and relatively quickly see, you know, what the guidance is. You know, how am I going to get a successful, you know, permit that meets, you know, our policy? So I think we do need to streamline. So as for the PUDs, in addition to keeping things, you know, general and flexible, I do think we want to get in certain concepts. Like, I've always liked the concept in the existing PUDs about clustering development. I like using the net acreage approach, but I think where feasible, we want to cluster development, we want to cluster it close to the highway. A lot of these areas that are PUDs along Highway One have, like, beach frontage, or they, the hills are in the back, and there's wildfire potential. I think everybody benefits if we keep things, you know, clustered to preserve, you know, the view corridor, protect habitat and that sort of thing. I'd actually like us, maybe we call it out someplace, like in hazards, but I think we want to make sure that for PUDs on the west side, we want, you know, sea-level-rise buffers, you know, where they're, in areas that are actually vulnerable, and we want those buffers to change according to the state's worst-case scenario as that, you know, evolves. I mean, it used to be three feet, then it was six feet, now it's 10 feet. So we want something that's flexible and iterative depending on, you know, what the state's guidances are, whether it's Coastal Commission or State of California. I'd also like us to have a policy, this is a little more radical, a no- I'd also like us to have a policy, and this is a little more radical, a no new traffic signals with these PUDs. I think we want roundabouts. If we just added in that the traffic signals for all of those PUDs along Highway One gets pretty gnarly. So, right. So if you can't, like, maybe, you know, access egress through an existing, you know, development, I think what we want to do to keep traffic flowing wherever we can is roundabouts for any new access. Now, when we're talking about affordable housing strategies for PUDs, I was one of the folks who supported, you know, reining in house size, you know, to the 2,000, you know, square feet. I would be willing to entertain larger structures that still need to be, you know, clustered. We don't want, you know, like, one house out in the middle of, you know, Dunes Beach or something like that. But I would say one way to get a handle on it is to say, you know, if you want, for houses over 2,000 square feet, you know, maybe for each additional 100 square feet or 500 square feet, you're going to pay, you know, a fee into our Affordable Housing Fund. If you want more than a two-car garage, you've got to pay for that third garage or that fourth garage. So I think what we want to do is we want to connect affordability with house size if we're going to go beyond 2,000 square feet. So, and I think we want to call out innovative housing strategies. I think clustering helps that. You might get more multifamily housing or cottages or something like that, but I think we want to call out, we're willing to entertain innovative housing, you know, arrangements that, you know, address some of our needs. And I think that the sorts of housing you called out, like cottage units, you know, help do that as opposed to, you know, monster houses or McMansions. So, you know, we're looking forward about, you know, millennials and future generations, who's going to be able to afford to buy a McMansion? I think the population who can do that is probably going to be shrinking over time. So we want to have housing types that actually people can afford and, you know, be able to live in, you know, looking ahead. You know, the McMansion is kind of old school, you know? The sort of zoning we have now in our residential subdivisions may have worked in the 60s and 70s, but, you know, it's not serving our purposes, it's not good for climate change, it's not good for traffic. So we need to really think about innovative strategies. Maybe we call that out as part of the PUD. As for individual ones, I think Casamira, that's fine. Mattiucci, I think there've been some comments on the record that might warrant a second look, but I think staff's recommendation is okay there. As for Andriadi, I don't know how we come up with 40 units of residential, but I would suggest that we do have a shrinking quantity of, you know, light industrial properties. And I like the idea of allowing expansion of the mobile home park, but that takes an existing, you know, light industrial property and turns it into something else. I'd rather keep it light industrial and maybe public facility. It seems to me that might be a good location, you know, for a city parking garage or a park and ride. It might be good for, you know, a solar array. One of the things I notice is there doesn't seem to be a lot of public facility, you know, zoning in here to allow for, for instance, the sand plant, we're going to have to do something about the sand plant and sea level rise, right? It's going to be hard to move it.
Excuse me, point of order. If we're going to talk about that, I need to skate because I live close to that.
Oh, okay.
Will you bear with me?
It's just sort of a brief. So, you know, one solution might be individual packet plants distributed in the community. You know, we might need a whole different paradigm of how we treat sewage. So I'm just trying to get us to think about what are going to be our public facility needs in the future. And having some of those in the downtown area seems to make sense, not just at Shoreline Station or around City Hall. So, you know, I like the idea of something different along 92. Light industrial, yes, but maybe, you know, there's some public facility, things that could be done there. It seems like we have, we're allowing for a lot of housing in any case, and that we might not lose anything by not having that be housing. The south downtown gateway would probably leave flexible. Who knows what traffic studies might reveal in terms of alternative scenarios for development? I just think if we leave it flexible, we could go either way. So it seems to me to leave that open. Now, South Wavecrest, does that not include Spyglass subdivision, or does it?
It doesn't. We redefine the boundary for the PD, and we put Spyglass into Ocean Colony.
Okay. I do support leaving Ocean Colony and Pacific Ridge as is. With nurseryman's exchange, I think we want to make sure that any access egress, you know, is aligned with Roosevelt. And, you know, again, it'd be nice to have a roundabout instead of a light there. I concur with staff on the Upper Grand View in Dolores. I think that's it, isn't it? Did I touch them all? Let's see.
We do have the graphics if you want them to follow your discussion.
I think I've covered the most important. I'm just trying to get through so you don't have to listen to me anymore. Now, Podesta, I didn't talk about Podesta. So, again, like others, I have a hard time imagining even 125 units in that area with the circulation issues for reasons people have already discussed, the private road. It just seems to me to be, you know, one nightmare scenario after the other. So I don't know how we address that. And having even more than 125 units, I just don't see how that works, but anyway, that's a comment. As for the categorical exclusion areas, I'm having a little bit of a trouble with that. I think that has to be scoped out very finely. I'm more concerned about remarks about having those in existing neighborhoods. I think, I view existing neighborhoods as potentially under assault, if not already. You know, with short-term rentals, with the new ADU regulations that get rid of owner occupancy, I think we have to do our best to preserve neighborhood, existing neighborhood character. And I think that's going to be hard, but I don't think we want to add to it. You know, I think we want, you know, to have, you know, develop the identities of our neighborhoods. We want to maintain owner occupancy. I personally would not like to see our community turned into, you know, just vacation rental hell, second homes where people aren't there most of the time. Part of our strength as a community is, you know, people living here for many years, volunteering, knowing your neighbors. So I'm, you know, pretty much against anything that might hurt existing neighborhood character. That said, I do like the idea of where we have infill lots of like 5,000 square feet, where we have, like on Poplar Street, the four units, four manufactured homes on a 5,000-square-foot lot with one driveway. I think that could work in existing neighborhoods, and I'd be in favor of that approach. I like that approach. Overall, I think we want to be very careful about, I'm glad we're addressing housing. I support the workforce housing concept, but we have to keep in mind that traffic already is, you know, miserable. I don't think we want a four-lane road making our community even more divided than it is. So I think we're going to have to be really careful on the numbers, you know, on the capacity. It's one of the reasons why, you know, we support concentrating our development downtown. And when we say we want to concentrate it downtown, we mean we want to concentrate it downtown and limit it outside the downtown area and find ways for people to get economic use of their property without overloading the circulation system. This is always going to be with us, this problem. This is our cross-to-pair is, you know, traffic. Nothing we do is going to really solve it, you know? Four-lane highway, it'll just be loaded up the day it's finished. So I think we want to be careful on the numbers and really, I don't know how we do it, but get a better grip on our carrying capacity. You know, it seems like visitor serving is loading it up just as much as housing, you know? So I don't know what the ultimate number is, but I think, I think many people in the community, if not a majority, already agree that we're there. So I think we need to keep that in mind and focus on affordable and workforce housing and not a whole lot more, you know, market-rate housing or standard 60s, 70s-type subdivisions. And, which raises another point. So somebody brought up the issue of making sure we have a way to address lot legality because we have all these antiquated subdivisions and all these substandard lots. And I think that's going to give us an important handle on that. There's a lot of contiguous ownership. We don't want loads and loads and loads of little tiny things on little tiny lots in areas that have resource, you know, value. So we need to deal with our antiquated subdivisions. And so I think lot consolidation programs are worthy. I know State Coastal Conservancy, my employer, has done those, and I think Wavecrest was actually in a lot consolidation, restoration area. So we need to look at things like that to reduce the development potential while giving people some, you know, economic return. But I think staff has, you know, done a wonderful job at articulating all this. There's still some more work to do in terms of formatting and packaging. There's tweaks at this point, but I think staff has done, you know, Jill and staff have done just an incredible job. It's staggering, really. And I want to thank, you know, Rick and Jimmy for all the hard work they've done in alignment with staff. It's amazing to me. So I'm grateful. And I think we're a long way down the road and really happy about that. And nobody's going to be completely happy with everything we do, but I think if we meet the intent of Chapter Three, and I'd like us to see, make sure that we actually link what we're talking about to policies in Chapter Three. I've got a, I've got Chapter Three in Word, which helps, to make it clear why we do what we do. We're in the coastal zone. This isn't, you know, Belmont or Fresno, or, we're in the coastal zone, so it's a special place with special regulations. And for people who feel overburdened with development regulation, a lot of what we do, a lot of how we regulate is mandated by law, state and federal law, because we're in a resource area, and we're entirely in a resource area. So we have to deal with that. It's not like building and developing anyplace else. We have to acknowledge that. And that's part of, you know, our golden goose that makes it special. So, I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's take a five-minute break and come back here at 10 after nine, please.
Yeah, some questions. Okay.
Okay.
Harvey?
Yes, dear.
I have a couple of comments.
Go for it.
Oh, you want to go? Yeah. Got it.
Wait until Jimmy gets here.
Debbie's still coming.
Wait for Deb.
Thank you, staff, for all of your hard work. I will not go over each and every part that, that has been discussed. I am in general agreement with what council and the commission have said. I wanted to make two points. One, I like the idea of limiting the housing to 2,000 square feet wherever possible. I would even like to see it smaller than that, but if 2,000 square feet is where it is, I can live with that. The second is, if we are to continue to thrive as a community, we have got to build affordable housing. So despite the fact that that brings traffic problems with it, circulation problems with it, um, I think it's got to remain a priority. If we could get 160 units on Podesta, I'd be thrilled. The circulation is something that we will have to deal with. You could do that by limiting the number of cars on the property. You can do it with the bicycle and ped paths. And you're going to have to add ingress and egress on Main Street. That's North Main Street. That's, it's, it's a given. So I, I don't want to see us restricting anything in the way of extremely low, low or, um, very low income housing anywhere on the coast. I want as much as we can possibly get in. We will not continue to thrive without the laborers that will live in those homes. That's, that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Deborah. Adam?
Yeah, may I just start out with a question? So, um, and I know we're talking about the development portion of this, but, you know, when the committee was established to talk about the general plan, uh, the number one thing that came out was to maintain Half Moon Bay's small-town character. And, and just so I can answer that question, what, what, what is it that we're talking about here that is engaging in the small-town character? Because this is all, all growth and change and all things that seem to be contrary to that to me. So I'm just, I, I need to understand how to respond to that from your perspective.
I think that's a, a great way to dial us back to, to those guiding principles. So first of all, one of the key things that you might not have, uh, realized with the downtown is we're not proposing to raise the maximum density of downtown or the height limits. We're very concerned about changing that. There is enough density and height allowed in the code as it is to result in high-quality development forms for mixed-use, single-use commercial, or single-use residential. And that is a character-defining feature of the town. And if, if you increase it, um, a concern we have is that density bonus concessions can include height increases. So hold that back. Keep, keep where you are. You could still get some height bumps that, um, you would, you would be giving that up in exchange for some things that you really want, which would be deed-restricted affordable units and other, other kinds of things. But don't, don't give it away. Keep it, keep it where it is. I really strongly recommend that. That's why the whole plan was, was drafted with that. So, um, that's downtown. The other things that might not be really clear tonight because we didn't present on it, the Town Boulevard concept is a pretty big deal. And you've seen it, um, kind of in a tangential way with the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The idea of the Town Boulevard is for Half Moon Bay to command that as your street as opposed to a highway that, that cuts you in, in two pieces. And it, similar to the comment from Councilwoman Reddick about no more signals and, and roundabouts, that's right on the theme of it. It's character-defining. It builds on some of the really nice things that have already been done, supported by the chamber with medians and the like. It's safer. It has appropriate, not too much signage that looks like Half Moon Bay. It feels like Half Moon Bay. You're not nervous about your kid crossing it because it's under control. In fact, maybe even the design speed is reduced. It is not four lanes. It's, it's what you have now. It is not expanded capacity. Um, a big conversation with the G-PAC and, and the Planning Commission was if, if we make Highway One bigger, it will fill. And that additional, uh, number of cars are going to have an even harder time finding a place to park at the beach or elsewhere. Back to that carrying capacity, um, comment. You're, you're, we think you're there, and that's something that we really want to be, um, representing to, to the Coastal Commission. Frankly, there's a, there's a point where Half Moon Bay, if, if you, if there's a push to create even more, um, visitor-serving uses and all kinds of other access things, us over-the-hill people, we're not going to want to come anymore. You, this is, it's, we want it to be like it is. Um, it's really important to have a small town in San Mateo County. And to have a small town in San Mateo County that's this small beach town with ag is part of that, too. So moving on from downtown height density, the look and feel of that, um, should have mentioned historic resources because that's something that's not covered in the current local coastal program. There's a, uh, Chapter Eight is, has really excellent coverage for historic resources. And if we aren't allowed to keep it in this document, it's okay. We'll put it in a general plan element. The city needs this. It's really important to have that coverage. Additionally, uh, outside of downtown, the preservation of agricultural uses, and you heard really direct input about that tonight, really important input that staff has been, um, trying to understand how to, um, put into the plan. The Planning Commission has worked really hard to accommodate it. Our feedback about that is we've been talking to, um, over time, different property owners, the Farm Bureau and others, is you gotta let them do what they need to do on their property as long as they're preserving the land for the agricultural use and keeping it in those uses or compatible uses. If they are economically viable, that part of your character, you're a lot more likely to keep it. And so that's very, very significant. Um, the lot retirement policy and the potential for transfer of development rights policies could see Half Moon Bay have more, um, protected open space over the long haul where we, we've got, uh, as well as there's also a lot merger policy. So that, that speaks to the consolidation, um, feedback that we heard tonight. So open space, part of the character, ag, part of the character, what that highway is like, you're downtown. And then there's a whole nother piece in here which we may need to move because it's not specifically Coastal Act. There's a hunk of stuff, policies and description and care and feeding about your neighborhoods. That's something that in other cities that have a land use element and don't, don't need to do a coastal program, that could be half of their general plan is about taking care of neighborhoods. So this is, there's a lot in here, and I, I don't want to go on and on, but the visual resource chapter as well is, is another really important, uh, reference point. So it's in here. There's a lot here. I think the Coastal Commission direction is going to make the book thinner, and that could be helpful in, in a lot of different ways. But we're, we could come back at it in another session and talk more about character, but it's there. Now, I suspect, um, we, we've talked about this, that some of the reaction is because the build-out numbers are big. And they are. And you know what? They're a lot bigger in your plan right now. This plan really tuned those numbers. It, it's turned, yeah. Um, it's tuning them down and noting also at the same time that there's not enough public infrastructure to support even the reduced build-out. Why does the build-out matter? We'll think about this a little bit. Remember that it is, well, it's not fair. I haven't, we haven't presented this to council yet. Um, there's two build-outs presented in the Public Works Chapter, Chapter Three. One of them is a 2040 planning horizon. That's a, that's typically, um, how we get to plan outside of the coastal zone, is we take a planning horizon and we get to, uh, run our numbers up to that. And if you're a really good planner, you might go out another 20 or, or 50 years. I like to go to 2,100. It, it helps you see it. But you can only really be pretty confident through 2040. The Coastal Act makes us do something harder. It's this maximum build-out. And we call it theoretical because we're making a lot of assumptions about building out pretty much everything in town with some realistic caveats around it. So it won't happen. I am confident that those numbers that you see there aren't going to happen. But we need to do that exercise to find out just how sensitive that build-out is relative to public infrastructure. And what was really helpful about even the reduced build-out and then running, we modeled it. It was modeled for traffic, uh, water supply and, and demand and sewer capacity. And we, you know, obviously you've already hit traffic in, in your current condition. Water was in decent shape. We have, but you don't have enough water connections. There's likely enough water for most of that build-out. There's not enough water connections for, uh, non-priority uses. And it's very, we're, we're not hiding anything. That's all in here. It describes that. And the sewer plant capacity will, will hit a limit. So keep that in mind, that the, the build-out is a planning tool more than anything. And if, if we were doing, um, planning around the PDS that was keeping numbers the way that it is in the existing plan, it would absolutely blow away your, uh, infrastructure capacity and not leave anything in the downtown. So that, that, that was another consideration, is trying to figure out how to have the right amount of the right land use in the right places for the right reasons. Also, we had to say that, too. Okay? I hope that helps. Okay. Great.
Okay. Oh, no, you can go. Do you need to go? Because I got all my stuff written down. Go for it.
So one thing I didn't mention was I think we have to worry about, um, maintaining, you know, deed restrictions or putting in deed restrictions on what affordable housing we have now and have it be in perpetuity. I think there were 12 units down by Ocean Colony that I think were not sort of deed-restricted and are, are open to market forces. But what we want to, all I'm saying is we want to protect the affordable housing that we have now. And deed restricted in perpetuity, you know, it, it seemed, you know, it's going to be harder to build new affordable housing. So we need to make sure we don't lose any that we have now, whether the mobile homes or, um, Main Street Park. I, I'm not even sure that that's deed restricted in perpetuity. That might just be like 30 years or something. But in any case, um, point made. I do like the idea of making housing a principal use in the downtown area. I forgot to mention that when I was talking about downtown. You know, why, why, you know, make a big fuss? Somebody wants to, like, I know Janice Moody'd like to build a house on a lot downtown. Why put her through the wringer? Just let her build her house, you know, or anybody else. And then as for ag uses, we certainly want to support agriculture and allow some additional uses. But I, I want to, I want us to be cautious because I'm thinking about the ag uses in the county along Highway 92 and how over time that's gotten, I think many of us would say, out of control in terms of so-called ag uses, grandfathered under ag uses, things like train rides. For a while, we had elephant rides. You know, I don't, I don't really see that as an ag use. So I think we want to be careful that we don't allow those sorts of things to sort of take over. And they have traffic impacts, as you know, on Highway 92. So I, I see the 92 situation as cautionary about providing additional uses on our agriculturally-zoned properties. We just need to be careful. And that's it.
Yeah, so the ag use piece is on my, so, is on my notes as well. So in terms of the ag use, I agree. And I don't know if there is a designation for kind of like ag tourism versus ag, uh, like growing, if there's any difference between that in terms of like exactly what you're talking about on 92. Because if there is, I'm all in support of being able to create that designation, but then also make sure that the ag, like, growing, more or less, whatever that is, um, have, have the resources they need to continue to survive, more so than if it were to turn to ag tourism, which would then be kind of like a different designation where I wouldn't want to support as much, per se, based on those pieces. But I, I, that'd probably be the next phase of where I'd want to put support into there. Um, Podesta, I'm gonna jump around just because I got these notes. I am, I, I agree with Councilmember Penrose. We need affordable housing. I, I get that aspect, but Podesta, I am so concerned about the flow of Podesta. Uh, I, I cannot, in my mind, make it work. So I'd be curious to see, I know in the report here it says that there's going to be two, two access points. To me, it'd almost need to be, you know, four or, or restricted cars. Whoever mentioned that would be interesting. Or figure out how to make that with the bike and pedestrian master plan workout. But that is already a heavily constricted area of town. And I, I just, I, I'm scared of that one. Just, just throwing that out there. Downtown change, I like the downtown change that you mentioned, uh, earlier on. I'm not sure exactly what it was. And I know, I had the same question you did, Rick, on that, which was, you know, what is it? Probably like four infill lots that we're talking about, uh, in downtown. But regardless, to make downtown an area where in the future people can move into, um, the housing that we are looking for in downtown, I'm all in support of that, for that, for that particular area. So that's good. In terms of, um, what's the one on 92? The Andriati, thank you. So the Andriati, I mean, have you, have, have we explored, uh, being able, I would assume that the buildings that are already there are part of their unit, the, um, what are those, what are those called back there?
Hilltop Farm?
The condos. Yeah, what are those called?
Cypress Cove.
Cypress Cove. So Cypress Cove. Uh, have we ever looked at exploring like those roads as access points to those areas? Because that would, I would never want to have it off of 92, but those access points already kind of exist through those neighborhoods. I'm not sure if that's a possibility at all. Everybody thinks that's funny, but. Yeah.
It's a, um, it's a difficult area, and, uh, feedback we've heard from neighbors in that area, they're pretty militantly opposed to people putting paths or, or any kind of access points through their community. That said, um, concepts like a traffic circle could work off of 92. We really would have to get Caltrans to think about things a little more flexibly than the overpass or the bridge or these massive 17, $20 million type proposals they would want to do. So there, there's definitely a lot of resistance, though, to extending even the road there. But you know what? The most logical place is to extend the road and just go right in there, but you just got to think about circulation. You got to have more than one way to get in and out. You got to have more than one way to get in and out.
Yeah. I would say that the condos only have one way to get in and out, then. Or, so, I don't know why that would need to be changed further in, but maybe it does. I don't know. But I would be opposed to it if it was on 92. I'm okay with it if it's through the other areas. And then, South Downtown Gateway, I agree with Councilmember Ruddick on that one. And Venice Beach, I'm okay with that one as well. And those are my notes currently. Go ahead.
Go for it.
Can staff ask a clarifying question before we move on? We were going to already ask a clarifying question about South Downtown Gateway, AKA LC Smith Estate, the comment about maintaining flexibility. We want to understand what that meant. Does that mean with the PD? Does it mean with the zoning designation?
I mean, I think it's okay to be a PD, but I don't think it necessarily has to be, right? I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the benefit is of PUD there versus just zoning. But the good thing about a PUD is that, you know, it's kind of a flexible designation if you apply the Coastal Commission's, or actually, I think it was ours, and they bought into it. Originally, they wanted more detail. But, yeah, because given impacts to yet be evaluated, we might want to entertain alternative concepts. And I think giving the property owner some flexibility there would be a good idea.
Just for the good of the group, we, so, we would look at that as a general commercial designation, then, which is really how that PD was drafted. There's language in that PD that is essentially saying, this is an, was it enhanced? This is, it has a little adjective about it being, it's a special version of your commercial zoning. And most of the poli...
Sorry?
It's okay. Most of the policies in that PD that are really different than what you might find in the zoning code were focused on the gateway treatment where the Half Moon sculpture is located. And so there's not a whole lot else in there to help us do development review beyond what zoning would do. So that helped clarify, we would recommend using the general commercial designation because the gateway treatment has already been worked out. And it's a mixed-use designation, and it has a reasonable range of heights and densities and the like. And it would not result in a substantially different build-out than what the PD requires now.
Jill, would affordable housing be consistent with what you're proposing?
It could be. The site, if it had the mixed-use zoning designation, it could have residential, even single-use residential. And of course, affordable housing could be included in that. We couldn't require that the whole site be developed with affordable housing. That would be beyond what, the scope of what we can do. That's something we can do with the overlay, but we can't, we can't do it with this case.
Thank you.
So visitor-serving does make some sense there because of what's, what the future holds for the Johnson House area and the trail going up to the Johnson House. And I know the property owner talked about, you know, bike rental or whatever. So there is potential there for some visitor-serving. So I'm assuming that's allowed under general commercial as well.
It is. And if you, so, we proposed either one of those. We just, because the PD was written in a way that focused on, it seemed like it focused more on general commercial, but it could go either way. We have also heard, though, that there was interest in residential there. So that was the other reason why we were leaning towards general commercial. The visitor-serving commercial zoning district does not allow very much housing.
Go for it.
Thank you. So just to touch on that question, it wasn't what I had in mind, but it seems like that, you know, a proposal is, you know, there's an in-dialog proposal there. And it may be that, you know, we'll get clarity on what kind of thing makes sense before we get to certification. So maybe we'll, you know, maybe we don't have to agonize too much. Maybe we'll just get it.
That's right.
So turning from the wonkiness of earlier to some values and some judgments, I wanted to touch on the Town Center infill slide. That was the East Poplar one. That's a part, that's an area that's, yeah, there you go. So you can see that blue boundary actually touches on to what we anticipate will be our Town Boulevard. And I'm not sure that residential makes sense right at that interface. I mean, you're the urban planner, it's not me. But I envision that there could be some opportunity at the face of that area that could provide something of greater value to a larger community than more housing. Not that I don't like housing. I wanted to touch on a comment that Robert made early about the importance of organizational memory and acknowledge that there's a lot of stuff in the plan that maybe is hard because it's just so thick. But the best case in point I can think of for that is to capture in our new LCP the story of Beechwood and the story of Pacific Ridge. Those are both places that, you know, 20 years from now, people will only have second or third-hand recollections of what happened. You know, I look at stories of how the water flows in Grandview, and I'm trying to put together the history in ways that I can't anymore. I'm finding handwritten notes about profusions of waters, you know? So this is a place where our settlement agreement, the results of the lawsuits that the city has been involved in, needs to be captured. And, you know, if that's part of the narrative of those planned development districts, great. If it's not, I want to be sure that it does, that we don't throw those babies out with the bathwater. With respect to Carter Hill, I don't know if anybody's talked about that tonight. I want to spend a minute on that, on that one, if you can pop that one up. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. So the colors on the map, notional map, tell the story of what concerns me about intensification of development in this area. And from my perspective, at least, leaving this as planned development gives us a chance to think more about it before we go off. I can think of uses that could result in residential as a side effect. Say we, if agriculture were in that area, there'd be these ancillary uses, farmworker housing. And I just don't know that it's responsible at a location that has this much hazard. So I'm very concerned about what this could change into if we take it out of PD. I don't think we have clarity of insight to make that judgment. So I hope that we'll be able to retain this one. Staff also mentioned the limits of our infrastructure earlier tonight. She talked about sewer and water and roadways. And I just want to inject drainage infrastructure. That is, someone wiser than me once told me that that is the Achilles' heel of development on our plateau. And if we recognize as part of our planning the need to facilitate drainage, then we can avoid a Seymour or some of the other places, Pullman maybe, where we have some challenges that are in pretty bad shape, to be honest. I'll shut up. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rick?
Since I've had more than 10 minutes to think about some of the things that were presented today on East Poplar, on the infill sites, I do think providing a little bit of flexibility around the Town Boulevard, like, that could be interesting. I'm not sure it really fits into the character of the surrounding neighborhood, but its flexibility could be warranted. In particular, on Main Street, if we have a, several design studies we've done on the LC Smith project that are proposing to make a thriving anchor point on the south end of Main Street. And we've seen new developments on Main Street that are mixed retail projects. And we're starting to see businesses like Sacrilege, Pasta Moon really build up on the south end. So I think the other area we should consider some flexibility on is the part of Main Street for East Poplar. Just thinking about having maybe mixed residential along there so we can help build up and think about that, that area, along with the bike master plan, which is going to continue to feed that area. Going back to Podesta, I'm going to gently disagree with my council member here. I think that, I do agree that traffic is a major concern for this area. I'm not sure how many lots can fit in there. It's 125, 150, 50. I'm not sure what the right number is. What I am sure of is, this is the most promising piece of development we have in the community. And we have an opportunity to do all kinds of things with it. I would be cautious about saying it should be all affordable housing or low-income housing. I think part of what makes us a thriving small town is the diversity of the people who live here, both economically and another ethnographically as well. I think we want to, I grew up in an area where they put a lot of low-income housing in a clustered area, and it destroyed the neighborhood very quickly. So I think it's something where we just want to have a sensible approach where we mix things up in the right way and have the right balance. The, yeah, so that's my feedback on Podesta. And then, I think we've, the other thing, back to your question, Adam, about what makes a small town nice is having this workforce housing. So, I mean, we are talking about development, but we're also, part of what we've done is, as Jill indicated, we've downsized the build-out plans in a pretty massive way. We've also radically changed the focus of development to the downtown core at your direction. So we're really saying, these are the areas where we want development to happen, and really strongly encouraging it, having density bonuses down there. But we've got some big problems we need to solve around circulation, you know, the bike plans, how we move around. But, yeah, I, I'm pretty excited about where we ended up. I do think some editing and tuning down would be great. I take a little bit of, I don't want to get offended by the feedback from the Coastal Commission. I understand they want to give us flexibility, and they obviously do this a lot more than we do. I think the planning maps as concepts are really critical because it, and I would encourage us to find a way to memorialize these, even if they're not in the LCP. Because this is not a, it's not a new right that's been taken away from you or some new thing that we've cooked up. What city staff painstakingly went through was all of the case study, the history around these lots. They looked at ESHA, they looked at previous decisions that had been made around what are the practical implications of planning if we're going to do a build-out. And, yeah, you can argue about where things are placed, but the work that went into just thinking about from a practical perspective, how has the city done this for the last 50 years? So when somebody comes forward and says, "I got 150 houses I can build here," well, no, you don't. Historically, we would have treated this as about 35. I think this is an important work product. And maybe it doesn't go in the LCP, but it should go someplace, and it should be available to everybody, in the public library, in a reference place, just so people understand this is the practical reality of what we're doing here. I think that's a really critical thing. So appreciate the Coastal Commission's feedback. We'll put this someplace else, but we can have control over our, over our community and capture the kind of feedback we want. I think that's it. Those are all my comments. And again, thank you. This has been a labor of love, is the only way to describe it.
Robert?
You know, I always think about, a lot about, how do we incentivize the behaviors that we want? So if we want people to build, encourage, whether it's developers or individuals, to build certain kind of housing, and I keep coming back to that, well, two thoughts. We did a lot of incentivizing around the building of ADUs, actually with the help of the county. Remember, they put together those incredible manuals on how cool an ADU unit could look if it's architected correctly, right? So you could take a minimum amount of space and do a lot with it. Now, when I look at that fourplex on Poplar, I'm thinking, well, I wonder, are those about 1,000 feet each? I don't know. Do they share sewer and water lines? I don't know what all the incentives are there. But with right arc, you've seen 1,000 feet architected well and innovatively be a completely different scene from something that existed prior. So if we can help people sort of see what that vision looks like, that can incentivize people willing to do something like that. Wow, I can have 1,000 square feet and actually still enjoy owning a piece of land, and it'll be beautiful. And maybe, you know, if there's some shack on some lot now, get rid of the retirement fee. Just a lot of little pieces. And give people a vision of what it might look like and help actually accomplish, you know, some of the things we're looking for by saying, "Yeah, you can be a part of this. It's actually really nice." But who the heck knows? How many people know what the Poplar fourplex even looks like, let alone what it could look like with some architectural visioning and overlays? So just some thoughts, how we, we'll have to do a little bit of marketing development in a sense to incentivize some of these ideas down the road.
Sarah?
Well, I would also like to echo the thanks to staff for this. This is, yes, as Rick, excuse me, as Commissioner Hernandez pointed out, it is a labor of love. And I, I did have, I also wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Hernandez's comment about not losing the narrative. And I agree that it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't need to be in the approved LCP, but I appreciated the work that you did to bring that in. It really helped me understand the opportunities and constraints. And that is really a first step to really thinking about how to master plan an area. And so there's a lot of work that went into that. Granted, it's, it's just a start for the master planning process. It's not a substitute by any means. And I understood the Coastal Commission's concerns about maintaining flexibility, and I see the reasons for being careful about what we include. I did, I had some kind of, I had a few thoughts, I'm going to jump around. So, but on one kind of overall or overarching thought about the, recognizing that the Coastal Act does have the priority land uses, and they're tiered, and, but, of course, you know, our development chapter is focused on residential. But I feel it as if that's, I mean, that's a reality we face, and I think it's our responsibility as a community that is completely within the coastal zone, that we have to figure out how we're going, if we didn't, weren't so careful and thoughtful about it, then we wouldn't be doing our duty under the Coastal Act, frankly. So I see that as a reality of where, you know, where we are as a community physically and we're under the jurisdiction of the Coastal Act. So, yes, it's a lot about development of residential, but that's bottom line. We are community, neighborhood, of neighborhoods, and, you know, so we live here. I did think of it after hearing a lot about the categorical exclusion. At first, I, maybe I misunderstood it. I thought it was just for uses, and it does sound like maybe it's just focused on uses. But after listening to the discussion about it, I'm not necessarily, maybe I agree with Commissioner Ruddick, that it may not be worth the effort for what the purpose is. If it's not going to be is. If it's not going to be in the appeal zone, I'm not sure that it's worth the, the effort to go through it. I also was a little concerned when I hear something like, oh, you'd want to re, change to a different use, like an office upstairs. I don't know whether, what that would mean in an area where you really want to have certain types of, like, commercial, and I wouldn't want to see like a, a spot that's really good for a commercial, particularly on a ground floor, get changed to residential in an area where it doesn't belong. So I don't think that's what you were proposing, but I'm not necessarily tremendously in favor of it, and I'd want to know, see where it is pretty specifically. And then I did want to bring up a comment about, a couple of comments about buffers. I was, I, I think that I may have said in a previous meeting, and I heard it today, about using site-specific analysis or assessment for determining buffers. You have a buffer, you have a minimum ESHA buffer, environmentally sensitive, environmentally sensitive habitat area buffer, and then you do a site assessment that might adjust it. And I realized that I may have said in, in a previous time, or, and I heard somebody mention this, that maybe it'd get adjusted down, but I think the point of having a minimum buffer is that it's a minimum, and that it would never go below that, you know, in terms of a buffer. And I wanted to make that clear, that if we're, I didn't, my interpretation or, of the Coastal Commission's feedback, as well as I thought what staff responded, was that we would still have minimum buffers, and that they wouldn't get smaller. And I think that's important. I also very much agree with Councilmember Ruddock's point about the flexibility in buffers in general, not just ESHA buffers, but hazard buffers. And I think that's, that's something that we should try to accommodate, make sure we still accommodate in the revisions that go, because, and actually, I would, I think it would apply to ESHA buffers too, because coastal bluff habitat is, is going to retreat fast, you know, faster and faster. And so to protect that habitat, you actually will have to have bigger buffers. And so to be able to adjust to conditions or new state guidelines, I think is really valuable for our plan, to be able to do that without having to go through a, an update. I am, I was very excited about East Poplar, still am, for support, really supportive of the rezon, or rezoning potentially to an R3. I think that's, I've always thought that that's a fantastic site for higher-density, affordable housing. I don't necessarily love the idea of trying to insert a commercial aspect along Highway One, which maybe would become a town Boulevard, you know, I, I feel like that's a little bit presumptuous. It does, there really isn't anything like that right now, and I'd rather see it prioritized for high-density, like, lower cost, low, affordable, and deed-restricted affordable housing. I think there's a wonderful opportunity there. So I just wanted to get that out there. And I really would like to, there was the, Commissioner Benjamin pointed out that the, there's a key constraint is drainage, and he and I have always been on the same page on that, and I would like to thank him, because I feel as if that, that has really come through in the plan. There's a lot more careful, thoughtful treatment of drainage in policies in, throughout the plan. And I think that I'm, as someone who works in the field where drainage is often the issue, I appreciate that. I think that will benefit us for generations to come. So I'm very pleased about that. And then the last thing I just wanted to echo was Judy Taylor's comment about how, with the Coastal Commission's feedback coming in, it, I know I felt a little bit blindsided. It came very late before one of the meetings, the planning commission meetings, and so I felt blindsided, and I was getting the information pretty quickly. I can't imagine for the public, it's pretty, it feels like, wait, the, you know, all, everything got shifted under, and we thought we were moving this direction. So it's, I know it's, and I really, I have to say, I commend staff, because they, they got that letter out and got responses out really quickly. And so just as much as possible, I think, putting as much in light of what, what, where we're getting changes that are, for instance, from the Coastal Commission, because they do feel like everything got kind of, the rug got pulled out from under you. And so I think especially for the public, and I really commend staff on how they've done that thus far, and would support, really supportive of them continuing that. So, and I'd like to thank you, because that was, I know, a lot of work at the eleventh hour. So those were my thoughts, and again, thank you for all of your great work.
Anybody else?
I should probably respond to.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, thank you, those were nice, nice words about drainage.
The other words, nothing that's.
No, no flaming here. With respect to that East Poplar, I certainly do not think that high, high-density residential, you know, R2, R3 stuff there is a bad idea. I think there is a great opportunity. It's a pretty big plot of land that's in that box, and maybe others have a much more finely tuned understanding of how the Highway Boulevard, other than constricting traffic to one lane, how it will benefit the public. And I, this was my stab at that. So maybe I should say not, like, I, I support a particular thing there, but just that there, you know, it seems to me that that area along Highway One presents an opportunity for, for walker scale, you know, for people who don't need to drive somewhere, who live downtown, or visitors who are walking, to take advantage of some services there. And, you know, I, when you go to Lisbon, you'll see, you know, high-density, you know, residential areas that have, you know, a bodega or two, or, you know, some restaurants, and they actually fit in and work out pretty well. But I, you know, I am not that kind of planner. I'm more of an infrastructure guy. So I am really open to other ways of thinking about this. I don't think we're in disagreement, but I, I would urge you to, you know, step back away from the high-density across the entire parcel, and think about what might work on the furniture of Highway One that would say something other than you are passing through a lot of residences to your east.
Are you suggesting a field trip?
Anytime.
Should we go to Lisbon and check it out?
Lisbon, yeah, bicycle trip to Lisbon. I think that's a, that's a winner. Anyway, but I take your point. Thank you. Thanks, Harvey.
Steve?
Thank you. Just two quick comments. I wanted to echo what Commissioner Hernandez said about Podesta. I mean, it's obviously got a great potential for us to solve some of the city's housing problems. Is the traffic obviously going to be an issue there? Yes, but let's not start with that barrier in mind. I say, think big and, and get creative about it, and see what can shake out in the, in the planning process. And, and lastly, excuse me, on the, on the topic of the workforce housing overlay, a planning commission meeting or two, I was supportive of the concept of county workers on that county land at the west end of Magnolia. And I just wanted, I think Jill brought this up proactively, just wanted the record to show that I think that should be conditional on those folks working in, in or near Half Moon Bay. It isn't, it loses 99% of its benefit if they get in the county truck and drive over to Redwood City every morning. And, and I'm also still a little fuzzy on exactly what the county holdings are there, and I, I'm pretty sure it doesn't go out onto the bluff tops, but that would be an important thing to know. Thank you.
Deborah?
Yeah, I, I would like to echo what Commissioner Benjamin said about the Poplar Street, but also the Main Street end of it as being, somebody brought that up before, I can't remember who it was, Commissioner Hernandez. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about 555 Kelly. One of the ideas that's come forth is that we get rid of the current house at 555 Kelly, combine that lot with the parking lot, which borders on Kelly Street and the Ted Adcock Center, and put in, what do you call it, pocket parking? What's that called? On the, parking on the first floor.
Tuck-under.
Tuck-under parking, and then two stories of affordable housing above. And I think that's something that we could do fairly quickly. We own the land, so we don't have that constraint. The zoning would work, so I'd like to, to see, see that project.
Anybody else?
Well, I want to echo what Brian said. When Sam Carr, the Committee for Green Foothills, and the Sierra Club all commend the work of the staff in writing this LCP draft, you know, something good has come about. So I really do appreciate what you've done. I have a minor comment and a major one. The minor comment has to do with minimum ESHA buffers. As Sarah has mentioned, and I agree, there should be minimums, and we should not allow them to be changed at the whim of the biological consultant. It would be a wonderful world if the biological consultants were all honest, but as has been pointed out, there are enough examples of what Jimmy calls biostatutes, that we should not let that happen. So, so we should really enforce the minimum ESHA buffers. In terms of housing, there were a couple of comments about how we want to increase diversity in the city. And right now, part of the lack of diversity in the city has to do with lack of diversity in housing. There are many people who are living, in, in some cases, two or three families in a single-family house. There just is not enough affordable housing. So I want to concur with what Debbie Ruddock said, and what Deborah Penrose said, that we should not encourage large houses, and we, and 2,000 square foot or so maximum size makes sense to me. But more important, we should do everything we can to have low, extremely low, and very low-income housing available to our workers who are working in restaurants, and landscaping, and hotels. This is what will make the diversity of Half Moon Bay better. And I don't think that housing like that is a blight, or will reduce the quality of the neighborhood. It, it, it just doesn't occur to me that that's what, what will happen. What will happen is that we'll have more people who really consider this community their community, who work here, who live here, and who raise their families here. So I'm 100% in favor of an emphasis on housing that's for extremely low, low and very low-income residents. And I, I understand it's not easy, but I, I just went to a symposium where, at least over the hill, the average cost to build an affordable unit is $750,000. So it, it's not easy, but we really need to put our resources any way we can into producing more affordable housing on the coast. The last point I want to make has to do with pushing back a little bit on the Coastal Commission's recommendations, and the, the fact that some of the so-called completed PDs should be rezoned. There's a real advantage in having this PD land use designation. It, first of all, is a protector of resources, which some of the other land uses aren't so clear. And more importantly, a lot of the PDs that I'm going to talk about in a minute have a lot of complications in their history, and without, with changing that, all these complications are eliminated, and the specific plans that had been developed will go away. And in many cases, the specific plans are important, and we shouldn't eliminate them. So if I could just go through this list of the so-called completed PDs, which had been proposed for changing their zoning, the Alta Merro or Casimera, that I think has been developed, and it's, should change to medium-density residential. The Mariucci PUD is not finished yet. There is a couple of issues with the development on, on the end, and there's a house that hasn't been finished. So until we really know how that is going to be developed, I don't think we should change its designation. The Andriati PUD is really contentious. It has lots of different components, and until we figure out how we're going to get access in and out, and get a, a better specific plan, we should leave it as a PD. The Main Street Park, I, I don't know the mechanism, but one way or another, it really needs to make sure that its deed-restricted affordability stays in perpetuity. We owe that to the, the residents there, as well as the 12 units behind Joe's Restaurant that were once thought of as affordable, but I've been told that the rent has already been raised, and we need to protect the residents there. And it would be very good to, to find out what we need to do to have deed restrictions in perpetuity. The A.C. Smith PUD at the South Gateway, as has been discussed, I think we should keep it as a PD, because we don't know what, what the best use of that particular triangle is. South Wavegrass, another example. There are lots of different components. It has an RV park, it has those 12 affordable units. Right now, it has spyglass, although I've been told spyglass is going to be removed. It has an office building. It's very complicated, and until we further understand how we're going to deal with it, I think it should stay as a PUD. We talked a little bit about Carter Hill. It's a fire trap, and one way or another, we have to protect the environment there. Maybe we could consider turning it into an open space zoning designation. That would probably allow the two houses that exist there already to stay, but not have any more development. But it's important to understand that it's not very developable. And as has been discussed before, Pacific Ridge should stay as a PD, and it would be nice if the settlement agreement was somehow incorporated in the language of the LCP, so that it would be memorialized, what had been negotiated between the city, the Coastal Commission, and the developer. So those are my comments about the so-called completed PDs. They need work, and the, I appreciate all the work that the staff has done, but this is where I'm coming from in terms of development. And I want to thank everybody, all commissioners and the city council people for very insightful and comments that really show that we really care about our community, and we are trying to do everything we can to protect it. Any further comments? Okay, stay safe. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.